Okay, we're live.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting hall order for the Zone South Borough Zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, August 18th, 2021. The meeting is being held virtually, so I'm going to read the statement to begin. Pursuant to Senate Bill Number 2475, which was signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021, this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of South Borough's website at www.southbourotown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner: by finding the meeting at www.southbourotown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on South Borough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay. Welcome, everyone. So the first item we have on the agenda this evening is 163 Parkerville Road. Eric Philbrook for variance, and Katie, you have the petition to read?
Yes, I do. The Board of Appeals of the Town of South Borough will hold a public hearing via a virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, August 18th, 2021, at 7:00 PM with regard to the petition of Eric and Amy Philbrook, 163 Parkerville Road, South Borough Mess. The petitioner is seeking a variance to build a single-family dwelling without meeting the required frontage or lot size requirements adjacent to their property at 165 Parkerville Road in the Residence A District. Relief is requested under Section 174-82D1 and 174-83D2. The same variance was denied and decision upheld in court dated on June 20th, 2018.
Thank you, Katie. So do we have somebody who's ready to enter and present? And before we do that, I'll just make sure I ask anybody who's entering, you need to at first identify yourself and your address, or if you're representing a petitioner, to just state what your position is in the matter before the board. Thanks.
So if you'd like to speak, can you just raise your hand? I've got a few people that look familiar but not sure. Thank you.
You're on mute, Mr. Connors.
I am so sorry. I'm having great difficulty getting in.
Great difficulty getting in.
I've had this problem ever. My name is George Connors. I'm an attorney representing Mr. Philbrook. And he's seeking a variance for a lot on Parkerville Road. He has two side by each lots, one with a house. And the lots are created in 1957. And they contain 25,000 square feet each and 105 feet of frontage. We would like to be able to construct on the vacant lot. If I go to the sheer screen and put up a picture.
Is anyone else getting very bad feedback?
My connection is horrible. Am I all right?
Are you only on one device or are you on two?
One device.
Right. I mean, you're not dialed in through your phone and then also on a computer, are you?
I get the phone. I think good at that.
It's very, very difficult to follow.
Are you hearing me? I don't know what to do here.
Let's have him close out everything and try to log back in.
Log back in?
Yeah, there's quite a bit of feedback. It would be impossible to follow. Could you just maybe try again? Maybe you have a better connection?
I'm trying it again.
Thank you. I'm hopeful that's only a bad connection and that reconnecting will fix it. It just, it kind of feels like it might be, the feedback felt like he had a phone and a computer going.
Yeah, if that's the case, he needs to mute the sound on his computer.
Correct.
I mean, he might not have a microphone on his computer, but he's got to turn the sound off.
Yep. Modern day problems.
I'm bringing him back over now. Mr. Connors, I'm bringing you over as a panelist. You just have to accept my invitation or request.
We good?
Yeah, that's better.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Update from a notice to update my Zoom and computer light. I apologize. We'll start again. I represent Mr. Philbrook, who owns property on 165 and 163 Parkerville Road in South Borough. And he has a house on one of the lots and a vacant parcel adjacent to him. I will preface these comments by the fact that he was before the zoning board several years ago, and he was denied, however. Looking at this a little bit differently at this time, I did not handle that. In 1957, there were a series of lots created, frontage lots along Parkerville Road in the then-required zoning of 25,000 and 125 feet of frontage. Currently, it's Zone A, requiring 43,560 and 150. So he is among the very few people in the entire world that cannot build on that lot adjacent to him. However, he does seek the variance to build a house. And we guess that the hardship goes with the structure in particular with respect to a provision in your zoning bylaw that would allow him to convert an existing one-family after it's in existence for a couple of years. There were two family and a lot, the minimum 15,000 square feet. Obviously, he has much more than that on the existing lot. And we suggest that in terms of trying to evaluate this, it's meant with that particular section of neighborhood. Zoning did change quite sometime after he had, after that subdivision, built A and R subdivision. And there is a subdivision behind it, which really isn't part of the neighborhood. There is a subdivision on the other side of the street that's a common driveway type thing. And I think that was Charlie Gaffney's property. And it's sort of separated from that. So it's a unique little grouping of housing going down the street. And to maintain that uniformity of that particular district suggests that it's best to consider that if he did in fact convert the house, did a bit of work on it and expanded it and made it a lot larger. And then a couple of years later, went through that procedure to avail himself of a second unit in the house. It would accomplish the same thing, two lots, the two units on, you know, 1,000 square feet of land. So we suggest that that might be a consideration for this particular site. There are hardships associated with it now with respect to the soils and the topography, which were not in evidence or not applicable back in 1957 era or whatever. They include new requirements for septic systems that have to be constructed, and there's a plan that has been submitted. It was prepared by, I think, Bemis and Associates. And it shows a septic system up in the back of the lot that is in fairly decent material. The plan itself shows that there's a break in soil type based on NRCS mapping. So in the back of the lot, there's a nice sand and gravel. In the front, it's more of a hill. A lot steeply sloped from Parkerville Road going up towards the back, and that requires a pump for the particular house if it were allowed to be built. It also requires a retaining wall because of the septic system breakout. None of that stuff was in effect as a requirement until sometime around 1966, when Article 11 of the Basic Sanitary Code became requirement. So it's quite different in that respect as well. I think that the policy of zoning really is to have a uniformity of districts. Now, the entire area was rezoned well after the subdivision, well after most of the houses built. Obviously, they're on smaller lots. And there is some case law that I've cited in there that says there's a policy that doesn't violate the authority of the municipality to preserve allegedly certain substandard lots for building purposes. I think that this particular lot fits into that category. Complete the homogeneity of that particular section of the town along that road. There's really no neighborhood, but it is an area that is very similar in house sizes, types, and styles as you go along it. So that really is the crux of our request, argument, and formation. I'd be happy to discuss this and answer any questions that you may have as we go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Connors. Just one real quick thing for clarity. Are you, is the request to build a single-family home on 163? I just trying to be clear. The application says use of lot merged to allow for single-family houses. The proposal to merge 163 with 165?
No, no. They're merged by law as it stands presently. We need to comply that particular aspect in order to get a building permit.
Right. So really, the request, if I can just kind of simplify it, is you want you want a variance to be able to build on 163, a single-family home. That's what the plans would seem to indicate. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Why don't we have some of the members ask questions? Paul, would you like to start off?
Sure. I guess I'm also a little confused with the comment about you know, allowing for a multifamily after, you know, a certain time. So is that, are you saying that you, your client could be asking for that, but instead of that, you're asking variance just to build a second lot on the second lot? A little...
Basically, yes.
Because that's like, kind of, I mean, in my mind, that's kind of two completely different things, because if you're doing a multifamily, you'd still be running off the same septic system, and this isn't, I mean, this is creating an entirely new septic system for a new house.
No, I think that if there was a duplex, it would require a new septic system to... Back into that bad zone. If we were a duplex, it would require a new septic system. That would be the requirements under Title V. And also, there'd be additional bedrooms, so it would be a larger system or a separate system.
Okay. So but is that, is that, I guess, the case you're making is that in lieu of asking for that to be a multifamily, you're basically saying the same net effect would be to just allow the same amount of bedrooms for a completely separate, new dwelling?
Basically, that's correct. Yes.
Okay. And so then, what, what is, what is different in that request? You know, you said it a little bit, but what is different in that request being made now that was denied a couple of years ago?
I don't think that was factored into it. It was simply, can we build a house there? It was not my petition. I think it was Mr. Bemis and Mr. Philbrook went in and partially based on a determination by the then-building inspector that suggested it was until they learned it was merged.
Okay.
I included documentation in my application.
If I could, I think for the purposes of this application, I think the only thing we can really consider is what is in the application, which is variance for merged substandard lot in Residence A to match others on the street, which, that's why I asked for clarification. I don't, I understand some of the comments made about converting to a duplex. I don't, the way that's read, you have to wait two years. So I think all that we can really consider in this hearing is what you asked for, which was, which is to be able to build on 163.
That is essentially true. However, you can have hardship with the structure that is different from those in the area. And that is the linchpin of this particular application, being a little bit different. The structure would be a different structure, and then after two years, if you could go and do, get a permit to do the duplex after two years when he renovated that house and made it larger, large enough for a second unit. That becomes a basis for the hardship argument. But you're correct. We are asking to be able to build on a lot that's substandard in frontage by 25 feet and in the area by about 25,000, 20,000.
Mike, you had something you wanted to?
No, I just wanted to just, you know, if there's any members that had questions about merger, its application here, I can speak to that if anyone wants to, but I just, it's for, I think, a lot of people. It's an unfamiliar doctrine. So I just wanted to make sure, because the application cites two things. A, we've got a merger issue, so the lots are seeing, what happens is if you have two undersized lots that have a single ownership, the doctrine of merger typically comply, and both lots are then subsequently merged into one larger lot to reduce the non-conformity. So there's, aspect one is to strip the merger. And then aspect two is once, once we've divided that, those two lots again, then to pursue the applicant's request for a variance on that smaller step. So I look at this, and George, tell me if I'm mistaken in my understanding of what you're asking for. It's two things. Basically, remove the merger, which we can do, and then to hear the variance. And so to me, it's a two-step process, but George, please elaborate if you think I'm mistaken in that.
I don't think you're mistaken. I wouldn't term it that way, and we didn't, but if that's what you're comfortable with, that's fine. I've gotten variances in instances like this before, simply asking for a variance for substandard lot. But I have no problem doing it as you suggest.
But I just want to make sure the lots have been merged by law, correct?
Correct.
There it is. So yes, that's how I feel.
Fine.
Okay, Paul, did you have other questions?
Yeah, because this was before you, if I'm not, I looked at the applicant whenever Katie said it, how many days ago? I remember Paul being on that case, so.
Yeah, I don't have any further questions at the moment. I, yeah, I did, I did sit on the, on the original case, yes.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Mike, why don't you, why don't you go next since you already chimed in?
I'll just speak candidly. I dislike the doctrine of merger. I believe, I believe it to be a takings. I'm a property rights, I'm a property rights person at my core. Owner owns at one point two lots. Laws change, and now he's got one. To me, that's to a lesser degree a constructive taking. So I have less of an issue. Mike Robbins, that's one of my real estate attorney things that I dislike, so don't let that influence anybody else's decision. To me, that's a constructive taking as per how Mike Robbins feels about the doctrine of merger. So I have less of a problem with that. And then, so stripping that away, it's, for me, it's, does this meet the criteria for a variance on this substandard lot, and then we should go through our typical variance deliberations? I too was confused about the applicant's question about like, well, it's a single family or maybe a duplex later, so I'm unclear as to petition says it's a single family. So that's where, hey, we want to build a single family on this smaller lot, smaller lot size. And then we deliberate, go through, go through those parameters as well and see if, see if we feel that a variance in this set of circumstances warrant. That's my two cents.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Craig, do you want to go next?
I mean, kind of along the same point as Mike, the idea that this used to be two lots and was somehow made into one through the merger component seems kind of backwards. But, you know, just looking at the lots that were legal when they were originally subdivided and now aren't is, you know, for me, that's also a kind of a red flag, but if a lot was legal when it was first developed and created and approved by the town, then it should be legal going forward, even if you decide to downzone the area. I think it's, it's consistent with all the other lots right around it. So, you know, in terms of you know, parameters of whether or not it's acceptable and normal for the neighborhood, I think it, it absolutely is, because it was all designed to be the exact same lot as its surrounding surroundings. So that's kind of where I stand on it. I don't know if there's I don't know if there's a lot of questions on it other than, you know, more of the official process of is this the first step or is this the second step? I mean, do we even have a lot to grant a variance on at this point? If it's not a legal lot at the moment?
The legal description of the deed references two lots, and again, this is, I really try not to influence anyone, but properties like this, unless you were really paying attention to merger and its application on a local level, on a Monday, you had two lots. On a Tuesday, you don't. And if the petitioner had, back in the day, had one lot in his name and put the other lot in a trust, then it wouldn't apply. So like, oh, you didn't wake up and see what the state was doing with respect to merger? Well, then you had two lots and now you don't. So I think, if I'm not mistaken, George, correct me, but I saw the deed, and I believe the two parcels are already listed and broken out on the deed, but I don't want to confuse that with about the thirty other deeds that I've looked at today.
Yeah, they are two separate deeds.
Well, then that's really my question. If there's a, there's a lot for us to make a decision on, then I, it seems pretty obvious to me.
Debbie?
I don't think I really have any new questions. I appreciate the clarity, because I was also confused about the, the application. I think that what we're talking about here is, you know, a variance to 174-82D with the minimum lot size and the minimum frontage. I am not really hearing that there's anything really new to this application, since it was, the variance was denied in 2016, except for an opportunity for a duplex. And so I am looking at it from the perspective of what's in front of us with the one lot and, you know, what the bylaws say. So I don't have any questions. That's just sort of how I'm looking at it.
Thanks, Debbie. Doris, did you have something? Thanks, Debbie. Doris, did you have something to, to chime in on? You're on mute.
I can see that. No, I, I actually don't have any other questions um, this evening regarding.
Thanks, thanks, Doris. Um, I, I, I'm just, I'm gonna say, I view. The application for the lot to be able to build it to be reasonable. I mean, it, it fits in with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, I understand the whole thing with, you know, what happened in nineteen fifty-seven, hadn't developed. I wasn't, I don't think I was part of that board, but i- in any event, I might have been a, an alternate. Um. I guess, but I, I, I have some concerns legally. Uh, I, if. I suppose to me, if they, they are truly separate, you know, divided, as, as Mike said. Um, then I don't have a problem. I, I, my only concern is, is there. A, a, another step that has to be taken to make sure they're divided and you grant it just to one sixty-five? That, and, and maybe, maybe you can answer that, Mr. Connors.
Well, I think that the fact that you would grant a variance, you were to, for one sixty-three, the vacant lot. To uh be a lot, notwithstanding its area in frontage, that would um. Coupled with a reference to the particular book and page of that deed, that would suffice. Now, uh, in terms of somebody challenging that, there'd have to be some sort of standing in harm. And I don't really see that that would be the case.
Okay. All right, just consulting our resident uh, real estate lawyer. Mike, are you uh? Do you have concerns from that perspective?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't. They're just deed out, I forget which lot is which, six or seven. They're, so right now, and this, just like, again, like I always use myself as a bellwether for if I'm crazy or not. Uh, you know, property that I owned, same exact set of circumstances, uh, they weren't even, neither. Combined were buildable lots, but at one point they were. Um, and so we had a situation and. But you could easily parse off that parcel if you wanted by way of just a quick claim deed uh from A to B. It's really the, does, to me, the question is, is the board okay with. Taking, removing the lot from being merged, one, and then two. Is the applicant suitable for relief uh from the board, you know, on, on, on that matter? But this, uh, let's, let's just play this out. Let's say we say, yes, we don't, we're gonna unmerge it. Uh, let's say, yes, it's suitable for a variance. I think then it's really just a. The petitioner is gonna want to have two separate deeds to two separate properties.
Okay, so we, I mean.
A deed with two homes, but you're just gonna transfer that over.
Okay. All right. Um, are there any other questions from uh board members?
Uh, Mr. Connors, which um, which deed is the one for one sixty-three in terms of the book and page?
I've got. Yeah, I have, I'm looking at the petition, page sixteen of the petition, Craig. Um, it's listed here. Trying to see, because there's a couple deeds here.
Yeah, that's the thing. There's, I was just wanting to make sure I, we had the right, you know, I knew which one was which.
Yeah, that's a good question, because I wondered the same. But we've got lot six. Uh, being parcel one, and then lot seven, and then let me pull up the plan quick. Lot seven is the one that's vic- currently vacant.
That's correct. Okay.
So parcel two on the deed on page sixteen, Craig.
Okay, so that's five, five, one, three, seven.
Forty-two.
Forty, forty, forty-three, forty, oh, forty-two is the top, forty-three is.
That, that would be the reference page.
Forty-two is the reference page, yeah. Right?
Yes, I would use forty-three as the reference, but that's me.
You wouldn't find it at the registry gates if you get that.
Well, whatever, however you want to.
About forty-two through forty.
That's fine.
Five.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, George is right. Like, it, to be referenced, but I was, I thought you meant the, the parcel identifier, so it's.
No, just the, how you, how we would describe it if we were to say.
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. We should probably open it up to the public.
Uh, yeah. Katie, is there anybody else who wish to speak?
Um, Elena Don- Donko has her hand up.
Hi, can you hear us?
Oh, we can. We can't yet see you.
Uh, we are, uh, your neighbors at one sixty-one Parkerville.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you just uh state your name and address, please? Just briefly, and you're, you're muted.
Hi, uh, we're, the neighbors at one sixty-one Parkerville Road. Uh, so we have a couple of questions to ask. Um, since we moved into this property, purchased this property back in two thousand sixteen. So we don't know a lot of, uh, you know, background about, you know, what's going on with one sixty-three, one sixty-five. Um, so my question was, is it an option that one sixty-five could become a multifamily house? What was decided the last time that this uh, uh, petition came in front of the board?
The idea of.
We don't want, we don't want it to be a multifamily house right next door to us. Is it an option?
No, it's not an option. It's just a uh consideration to create what would be the hardship arguments. Or the variance. We do not want to do that. We want to build a single-family house on a vacant lot. Um, there's an odd provision in the self-pro zoning code that would allow you to do something like that. It comes with some process and certainly an expensive uh operation. And it would require some expenditure and then sitting on a structure for a couple of years and then coming back and hoping you get that. So it's simply a argument in favor of keeping neighborhood as single-family houses by building on a vacant lot.
Okay, but it, it's, you know, if, let's say, if the money is there, uh, you could still build a multifamily house. Is it? Is that statement correct?
Sure it is.
Okay. I think that, that was my question.
The petition.
My second question would be the house, let's say, you know, we go ahead and we approve this. Um, you know, what would be the, 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 the distance from. That new dwelling to our house, to our current house? Is there such, such, uh, you know, rules? Are there any? Uh, criteria that needs to be respected?
Yes, there are setback and side yard uh dimensions required. Um, the side yard dimension for this particular zone, using the one-acre zoning, is twenty-five feet. The plan that was prepared by engineering design consultants shows the house about uh forty feet from the line rather than the twenty-five feet.
Okay.
Pretty much centered in the middle of the lot.
Yep.
Setback maybe uh. Uh, setback is. Thirty-five, and it looks like it's about fifty feet back.
Okay. And also the fact that, uh, I mean, at some point, uh, the, the construction started and it stopped. So there's a, there's, you know, obviously, there's like a hole in the ground.
Little bit of a swell, yes.
So I, I just wanted to know what happened there. Did, did the construction start and they stopped because of?
I do not know. I do not know.
Because it, it, it's, it's a tricky situation for us. Um, you know, it's, it's a hole in the ground, like I said. It's not an empty lot, that it's a nice empty lot, it's just a hole in the ground. So, um, you know, we're torn about, you know, what, what would be. Best, best for our, our property, you know, to, obviously, we don't want a multifamily house to be built right next to our property. But at the same time, we don't want to, you know, uh, a hole in the ground.
If, if, if I, if I could just clarify that, Jessica, uh, the, the. Application here is for a single-family house. If they wanted to create a multifamily, that's an entirely separate process. We are not considering that as i- in this hearing tonight. This is strictly about a single-family home.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, the fact that, you know, that there's, at some point, there was some construction um. Beginning to happen and then it stopped. Um, that's, you know, what, what's, what's gonna happen, what's best to, to, for us. You know, it's, it's, it's a tricky situation.
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. Was there a cease and desist order? Katie, do you know, like?
That I know of.
They start without the plan, did they start without?
Yeah, did they start without a plan?
Without approval?
Without approval, do they just, you know, commit it at some point without approval? I, I'm sure they had a plan, but did they have approval and they just start digging?
I, I do not know.
I don't, I don't know that we have any, any, any evidence or knowledge of that. I mean, as far as what I, the way I recall the earlier hearing is, you know, it was, it was a normal application. And it was considered by the board and it was denied, so.
Why was it denied though, previously? I'm sorry if I missed that. This is Elena, hi.
Hi, Elena.
Um, do you mind going over that one more time for me? Maybe I missed it. I'm not sure what was the.
If I remember correctly, if I remember correctly, and Paul, you were part of it, I, I think. I think one of the members had a concern of, you know. That there's gonna be multiple lots in town that didn't conform, that were gonna follow the same process. Again, this, I'm, I'm, I'm going on memory here. I, I think if I looked at what, at the decision, it was strictly two people voted against it. Three people voted for it. They need, they needed four votes. But I'm just going on recollection. What I recall is that was a concern. Go ahead, Craig.
Actually, in the findings, um, that is, the discussion was concerned about whether or not this would set a precedent for other, other lots in town. Um. It did feel that uh, it met all the other requirements. Right, um, it's proposal home that would be similar in scale and size to the other homes in the surrounding area. They just felt that. The allowance of this lot to exist, even though it existed before, would set a precedent. That was their, that was the sticking point for two out of the five members that voted.
That was the concern, yep.
Would set a precedent for other people that own such lots to build on those lots?
Too, yeah, so if another lot existed that got merged and, you know.
Not.
I, I think the number of those in town is probably severely limited, so.
Right, and I, and, and I, I do think, you know, anything that, that would try to follow a precedent. I mean, they'd be in this exact same situation. It'd be before the board, apply, appealing, you know, applying for. Uh, a variance, and they'd have to make their arguments for why it's a hardship. So I don't. My own opinion is, I don't, I don't think that this opens the floodgates to fifty more lots that people are gonna try to jam through, so.
Nothing particularly wrong with the lot itself. It's not too small to build a single family or anything like that.
No, I mean, I, I, the, the uh, the frontage at least, and maybe George can talk more about it, but the frontage. You know, complies with residence B, but now it's residence A. So, as you said, it's twenty-five feet too short. Um, the overall acreage is less than it would be in that zone, but. Uh, driving down the street, you could, or looking at a map, you can see the homes adjacent to it in the neighborhood are. The lots are the very same size, so.
I do, I believe including yours.
Yeah, for example, your, your house is not legal. If they weren't, if it didn't exist, you couldn't build your house today without a variance. It's not that it's illegal, it's that it's. If it didn't exist, you would also need to come before us to ask to build the very house you're in.
Yeah, it's not inconsistent with current zoning bylaws, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, do you have any other?
All right.
Selena.
All right, if, 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 if you're all set, just let us know.
Um, what's that?
I, I think so, yeah.
Once the decision has been made here today by, right, I guess you're taking a vote? Is that how this goes?
Right, we, 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 this is the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing and take a vote.
What uh, what happens next? Let's say if, once it's voted, it's voted, it's done? I don't know. Is there another, can somebody appeal or can, what's the process? We're not sure.
Uh, this, this pretty much gives them the ability to go on and develop and build a house. There's. You know, they, they get a permit from the, from the building department. They have to comply with the, the normal rules through the building department.
So, and, and there is a, there is a twenty-day appeal period. So we will, we will create the decision. It will get filed with the town clerk. Upon its filing, there's twenty days for an appeal. Yeah, um, and, you know, there, there are rules and kind of guidelines as to what you need to show to. You know, appeal. Um, but you do, you will have that opportunity if.
Okay.
You know, if it's allowed.
If it, yeah, if we allow it, um, if it's not to your liking, you, you know. Whatever we decide, if it's not to your liking, you will have twenty days from the time it's recorded with the town clerk to appeal.
Okay.
And we'll not, we'll know of this decision soon.
Like if we stay on right now, already closes and then you vote? Is that how this goes?
Uh, we, we, this is the public part of the hearing. We would have to first close the public hearing, then we.
Okay.
You know, you can still watch. You can still watch. And then we'll, we take the vote. But once we close the public hearing. You know, there's no more public comment. It's only amongst the board.
I understand. Um, one more thing, um, the hardship, I don't want to finish that.
The hardship was the cost of building a.
I guess I, I'm just trying to ask about the hardship. What was the hardship again? And I'm sorry to make a repeat all of this, but. They brought it, they brought it in front of you again, but what was the hardship part of this whole appeal?
Mr. Connors.
Cost?
That the option to go through a different permitting procedure and create a duplex is unlike what would be. Um, for a single family on the lot.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Quick question, if you don't mind, guys. If, just because you're right next door, are you in favor of them being allowed to build the house right next door, a single-family house?
Well, chances are, it's probably not gonna be owner occupied. They already don't live on the one sixty-five, so it's gonna be rented. Um, and that's.
But one sixty-five is also rented and, you know, they're very good people.
Very good people, but it's not.
Yeah.
It doesn't give you that, you know, neighborhood. I don't know, it's, it's not a, a big plus, but, um, and then.
We don't have a definite answer. We don't wanna, you know.
Probably maybe the.
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, it will be a hardship on us, because you have to deal with all the building and everything else that goes around with that, but, um, yeah. So.
Okay.
I guess we'll wait and find out. Thank you so much for listening.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, um, for the record, um, I have Elena's name, and can I just have your name too as well, just for the record?
Erin.
It's Arion, A-R-I-O-N.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Arion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your answers.
All right. Does anybody else have their hand up, Katie? No?
No, I don't see any other hands.
All right. Doris, Debbie, do you guys, you ladies have anything? Make a motion to close the public hearing then?
Second.
I've been motioning to close the public, public hearing and seconded all in favor. Hi, Debbie? Mike? Craig?
Hi.
Paul?
Yes.
Hi. William, William's eye as well. Okay, that closes the public part of the meeting. William, William's eye as well. Okay, that closes the public part of the meeting. Do we have anything we need to? Debate as part of, uh, as a board regarding this application? I sense that we. Kind of have similar feelings on this, so. If there's a, if if we wanna have any discussion or ready to entertain a, uh, a motion to approve.
I just wanted, Dave, I just wanted to make the point that in the package somewhere, the, um, proponent makes makes the point that. The the the, uh, the lot was purchased knowing that it wasn't buildable. I think he said the reason was he thought it didn't perk. Um, and so I wanna express my concern that, um, bringing. Bringing a, um, a request for a variance back to the board without really any new information. Um, I guess I just find that a little bit distasteful, especially since the person who purchased the lot. Knew that it wasn't buildable at the time it was purchased. I think I would feel differently if he came to us. And the zoning was changed while he was the owner perhaps. Then I think we would all feel very sorry and be trying to figure out, you know, that is really a hardship if that were to happen in the moment. But at the per time he purchased his house, he knew that that lot wasn't wasn't buildable. I just wanna make that point.
Differ on the point of it not being buildable because of perk tests.
Yeah.
Um, septic system technology changes what didn't perk adequately for. You know, at one point in time in our history might change based on different technology. So that's not a. Flat out never buildable. It's at the moment, based on technology, wouldn't have been.
Sorry about that. Um, that was his perception is that he couldn't build it because it it didn't perk. But actually, in two thousand sixteen, it was rezé and it didn't meet the, um, standards.
Exactly, Debbie. That that's that that's kind of where I'm. No, it's just. This, this is a real second bite at the apple. And so that, your feeling is definitely how I feel like. Wasn't conforming when you bought the place, so. But I'm really curious always about, you know. I I'm not a big believer that we set precedent. Every lot's unique, every petitioner is unique. Every set, I I don't have a problem saying yes on a Monday and no on a Tuesday. I have zero problem with that. Uh, I, my biggest concern that I have with this is just what Debbie said to a team. This was, this was a known. You bought it. This is the way it is. What's your hardship? Um, you have a house on it. It's not like he's not able to have a house. So. Okay, and that that that's my biggest issue. Uh, oh, there's a hardship because we might wanna try to do a duplex. Because of this or that. Eh, so I'm very, my, that's my, Debbie hit it out of the park as usual. As far as, uh, my concern, and I'm really curious about Paul, see if he has memory of this decision back in the day. Cause I wanna understand. I don't care about precedent, but I wanna see if what the other. You know, what you guys were thinking at the time for now.
So, um, that was, you know, that was one thing was setting the precedent. So that was, I guess, at the time of concern. Um, that's why I asked, there's any new information. I I still don't. Follow the rationale of bringing up the duplex as a hardship and I actually think that kinda. Made made the argument worse for them instead of better, because that's, you know, more of a concern to the neighbors, not, you know, not, not less. So I. I I I didn't find that argument worthwhile at all. Um, but yeah, at the time, it was, there's, you know, the concern, the precedent. And it missed, it missed on two factors, being conforming, you know, with size and fronted.
We lost you, Paul.
Usually was, I I remember one case of it. It missed the mark by like, like literally, I think, like twenty-five or fifty square feet. Not front, just square feet total. It just barely missed. But it was a situation where it was an older couple looking to sell their house and downsize to build on the lot next door for themselves. And they missed by less than fifty feet of square foot to make it conforming and and we and we allowed it. And not one, you know, every single neighbor was happy to see it happen and them to stay in the neighborhood and all that type of stuff. Um. I mean, I understand there's some concern here with the neighbors currently. You know, that was, there was no concern for many neighbors. Uh, when this originally was brought in front of us a couple of years ago, but you know, that's, that was the, that was the main. You know, the main reason for the denial was, you know, that it missed on two, two variables and those variables. You haven't, haven't changed at all. Um, so that's, and that was, that was the, that was. As I remember the reasoning back in whatever that was, two thousand sixteen.
Are you finished, Paul?
I'm finished.
So, uh. When they used that as hardship, that they would go to a duplex, um, my read on it is they're gonna. Go for a duplex. I thought it was a veil, it was a veil threat, and and not a, not a. That they wanna develop the property that they would work around, come around developing it in that regard. I thought when the neighbors came on the call, it did enlighten me. I wasn't aware that one sixty-five was a rental property. Um, and that likely one sixty-three, sounds like it might be a rental property. But there's this thought that. We'll be seeing a duplex in a year, a petition for a duplex.
Well, there's no, I mean, that could be, everyone has the right to do that. They come back to us and there's no, you know, we could say, you know. We could say no because it was nonconforming. We allowed it in the first place. We're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna come, compound the issue. So that's.
And we should be able to see. We should be able to see that in the history when they would come before the board to say, I want to turn this into a duplex. We should be able to see all that. All that history. I also think the, whether they rent it or not is, you know, affects the neighbors. It shouldn't affect us at all. That's not really a decision we have any, any say on.
We probably shouldn't discriminate on on that basis, no.
Right.
Yeah, as a renter, I'm kind of upset that that's even a consideration and brought up in a context like this. Um, renters are no less valuable members of the community than homeowners. So, um. I don't find that an issue for a neighbor in any way, shape or form.
I actually look at it as if it's more rental housing, we're desperate for it, so I.
Yeah, we could use more housing, there's no question. Or any type of housing, um, certainly. But the neighbors have their right to say what they think.
Right, they do.
And just what the neighbor said, it's not what I said, it's what the neighbor said. I'm just saying, it's a reflection of, what are they saying? What are they, what are they giving you feedback on? But that, so what you're saying, David, it's like when they, if the application came back, whether it should be just adequate history.
Right, I what, what I would just expect, if they, they, they come up and say, we wanna do a duplex here. You know, I I would think that there would be, we'd be able to pull that as part of the history that this was, this was a variance only a few years ago. I don't, so I don't think that's necessarily part of the discussion tonight because we're not ruling on that. Um, I mean, to me. I understand the concerns about when they bought it and the fact that it was denied already. But, I mean, to me, you go down the street, you've got all these uniform looking lots, and you've got an empty one. And I just, I I mean, in my own opinion, it's not logical to say you can't build a house here when there's houses all around it on the same sized lots. So, I mean, that's part of what we're supposed to do as a board. We look at the zoning rules. But the only reason they're before us is because they're not complying with the zoning. So that's why we have these. You know, we we deliberate like this. So.
I mean, I would, I would also kind of liken it to, um, the decision we made with regards to David Perry on Main Street. Where he was looking at setbacks and you look at every neighbor he had. And the setbacks he was asking for are similar to what every other neighbor in law in that area says. And so what they're asking for is to be able to build a single family home within the same parameters of setbacks. And height and square footage and F A R and bedrooms and bathrooms. That every other lot around them, for the most part, you know, in their original subdivision, was able to do. And yes, it got downzoned, um, you know, I think there's. The majority of houses in Southborough that wouldn't be able to be built today. Um, based on the zoning that got implemented and creating such large lots. Which has its own equity issues. So. You know, like David, it looks like a lot in an area with all the other lots looking the same. I don't see why there shouldn't be a house on it.
And if you, if you think about, you know, one of the, one of the lines that we like to use, does it derogate from neighborhood? I would say it does not. In fact, I would argue that it would improve the neighborhood.
It would improve the neighborhood to have a like-kind house. And not an empty lot with a hole.
Right, and even a rental house.
Definitely even, don't worry. Yes, a rental house.
Okay, are we, are we entertaining a, a motion then?
Can't make one.
No, you can't. Sorry, but we appreciate.
I move to approve the application for variance for one sixty-three Parkerville Road. Um, specifically parcel two on the deed. Uh, recorded as book five five one three seven, pages forty-two to forty-five.
Wait a second. We'll second it. Okay, motion to approve and seconded before the board. All in favor, vote, I, uh, responding with I. Debbie?
This is to approve, sorry.
This is, this is to approve the variance to build on lot one sixty-three. I think Craig was just being very specific. Regarding the deed. This is, this has nothing to do with the duplex. This is only to approve a single family.
We're voting on the variance. Okay, I I'm going, I'm vote, I'm I'm going to vote no.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Hmm, is this, uh, and this is still a situation where it needs to be four to one?
Correct, it does.
I'll, I'll say it, Wes.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
And Williams' eye. So that would be four to one. The variance is approved. Okay, thanks very much, everybody. Congratulations. Right. Next on the agenda, since it's not ten thirty at night, Mike. We can talk about reorganization of the board. Uh, we do need to, on an annual basis, appoint and vote in a chair and clerk. So, um, we're open for debate. Um, I I will just say, I'm willing to do it again. If somebody feels strongly, they, I I'm not gonna be offended.
I I would certainly love to, uh, see Dave as our fearless leader continuing for next year.
Absolutely.
I thought I, I thought I, I thought I decided my way right out of that last.
I'm just, I'm just glad you guys didn't vote me in last month when I wasn't here.
It was consideration.
Yeah, you're lucky, you're lucky the meeting went till midnight.
Yeah, I watched a bit of it on the YouTube recording.
God bless you too. And I I don't dare wanna watch myself again on that.
So, um, that was last week. We just, we're not gonna talk, we're gonna talk about the minutes, but that is something that we're not. Gonna be able to.
Correct, right. We we do wanna be careful.
Thank you, thank you, Katie.
Katie brings up a good point. There was litigation on that. So when we talk about the minutes, we need to make sure we really limit our discussions to the minutes. Um, but.
I move that, uh, I move that David be elected as chair for this coming year.
There's a second.
Right, we have a motion to approve myself and a second. All in favor, respond with I. Debbie?
Aye.
Mike, aye.
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Craig?
Aye.
Okay. I I I should ask Doris, this is, this is, this is meant, this is something you can vote on, I believe.
Yeah, that's just an internal vote.
Right. She hit two thumbs up, okay. All right, who am I to stop it? I'll vote aye. All right, thank you very much. Okay.
We, uh, if we also re, uh, reapprove our clerk, if Greg is. Willing to do that again, I would, uh, I would nominate him to be our clerk again.
Second. I will, I will accept that, so go ahead.
Okay, uh, that's good, proper procedure, Craig. Make sure you accept. All right, um, motion to approve Craig as clerk. All in favor, respond with aye. Debbie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And Doris?
Aye.
Williams' eye as well. Congratulations, Craig. Okay, um, very good. That's all there really is to reorganization of the board. Um, the next agenda item is approval of meeting minutes dated July twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Um, the the only, the only item I picked up on Katie is there's. There's a section in there, and I I'll find it in just a second, um, where you were looking to state the time. That something was said, and it says, state the time. So, I I I can't tell you what the time was.
I can find that.
Yeah.
I can find that.
Where is that? It it was, it's all in bold, so it's actually not, oh, yes.
So I should have found it, you mean?
No, 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 sorry.
No, that's why it's bold like that. So I apologize, I missed that.
It's under the thirty-seven Lindbergh Road, the 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 garage. That's the only problem I had with it. And and the time there will be whatever you determine it is from the tape, I'm sure.
I will correct that.
All right, any, anybody else?
Well, I wasn't here, obviously, but, um. We are aware that there is officially, like, we've been notified there is litigation in regards to. Are we supposed to publish the minutes from the meeting now that it's in litigation? On that topic, or does that have to be now, you know, relegated to? Close session. That's my only question.
That's a great question. Um, I believe you're right. I'll follow up with town council tomorrow. I think you can approve them. Um, but we may not be.
Yeah, approving and posting, I guess, are different things, so.
Yeah, so I guess in the motion would be like approve, but wait for town council on posting.
Would they be redacted? Like mine's redacted?
Yeah, so the rest of the, the rest of the minutes would, again, per what town council. Suggests and guides us to do. But yeah, that section, if it's under litigation, might be redacted. And the rest of the minutes would be. Posted.
You're already justifying the board's faith in you as a clerk, Craig, just for the record. Um, okay, all right, but tho- tho- those are, that's an excellent point. Uh, thank you for for bringing that up. Uh, so we can, as long as we're, uh, happy with them, we can agree to the minutes. But we'll just say, um, the the posting will be pending, discuss further discussion with town council. Did, all right, did any, did anybody have any substantive issues or typos or anything regarding the minutes? That Katie provided? Okay, and we can entertain a motion to approve the minutes, but not post.
I'll render a motion to approve the minutes, but not post. I think I can do that. Yes, I can.
The second.
Pending town council review.
Pending town council review, yeah. Pending town council review, yeah, very good.
Second, someone?
Second. Mike, seconds, okay, okay, motion to approve pending, uh, and approve the minutes as written, with the exception of the get the time as noted, um, posting to, to be, to, to be, uh, dependent on review of town council, all in favor, say aye, Debbie?
Yep, aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Craig? Thing. Doris?
Aye.
And William's aye. Okay, very good, thank you. Um, just looking at the agenda, okay, appointment of ex-officio member to master plan committee. Um, Katie received inputs on this, uh, we had spoken about Debbie being the one that we would nominate to be posted, she has the interest in it, I don't know that we need much debate here. Okay, so. Um, suppose I can do it, I move that we appoint Debbie Demaria, ex-officio member to the master plan committee.
Second.
Right, a motion and a second, all in favor, respond with aye, Debbie?
Okay, aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And Doris?
Aye.
Williams, aye, congratulations, Debbie. We could send that to, that's the, is that the, the selectmen or the, or the zoning, I'm sorry, or the planning board?
It's planning, yes.
Right, yeah, that's right, okay.
Arena, yeah.
Okay, um, not on the agenda, but something, just for brief discussion, I, I didn't want to, you know, we, we did talk about, uh, previously, do we want to meet in person via Zoom or a hybrid? Uh, I actually sent a question today to our technology guy for town to ask what the options were for hybrid. However, in the meantime, Mark Purple sent out a memo basically saying till the end of September, we are back on Zoom due to Delta variant, you know, spread of, of the, of the virus. So, it's kind of a moot point, um, but Katie, I think you'll probably follow up to get a little bit more information. Um, Katie said that there's, it's not really working at the moment, but hopefully in another, you know, by, by October, they'll have, have solved it, and then we'll have options. Um, that's really all that is there. Uh, and then, the only other thing, we have an agenda, the next meeting would be scheduled for September twenty-second. Do we have anything currently, um, uh, that would be on that meeting, Katie?
No, I don't have any applications as of yet, and we're coming close to the deadline, so if I do get any, I'd let you know, but right now, we don't have anything.
Okay, all right, well, let's keep it on the, on the calendar, uh, I mean, if nothing else, we can, we can approve minutes, we can discuss whatever's going on regarding Zoom and in-person meetings at the time if we need to. Um, and then obviously if anything comes up very quickly. All right, any other business before the board, before we get Paul his moment?
Um, I've noticed in the past couple of meetings that I've been on, that Jamie hasn't been attending, has anyone heard from her, is there any news?
Katie, have you gotten responses from Jamie?
Yep, so she has, um, been in and out in the summer as far as traveling and such, and unfortunately for our July meeting, she missed her chance to get sworn in and had to wait to the next Board of Selectment meeting, which was after our July meeting, so she couldn't make that. We are, I already knew she couldn't make this month, but she will be back and is excited to participate.
Okay, great.
That's good.
I'm, I'm sorry, Paul?
I said that's good that we didn't scare her away or anything.
You can have that effect on people. Okay.
Paul?
I've seen like three or four turnovers since.
You've seen a lot of people turn over, Paul, there's no question. All right.
John.
It's your moment, Paul.
Okay, I make a motion to, to end the meeting.
Second.
Second, all right, motion to adjourn and second, all in favor, say aye, Debbie?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Mike? Paul?
Oh, yeah.
Craig?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
And William's aye, thanks, everybody.
Take care.
Guys.
All right, congratulations.